Good evening. It is 6:30 PM and I am calling the Monday, August 10th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is structured to allow virtual participation on Zoom or participation in person while following social distance and mask guidelines. Members of the public are welcome and encouraged to participate when invited throughout the meeting. If you are participating virtually and experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the Zoom meeting and then rejoin. This has usually fixed the problem. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available live and recorded for later viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to zoom.us/join and typing in meeting ID 985-2075-5328. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299. Your call will be muted until there is an agenda item that contains a public hearing. I will provide further instruction and notify you when you may speak. Please note, there may be a slight delay due to the differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computer to avoid feedback. Now, onto the agenda. The first item onto the agenda is adoption of the agenda. And I guess I'm looking for any changes from the Planning Commission to the agenda? None? Any from staff?
No changes from staff.
Okay. So could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner John?
I move to approve, uh, adopt the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Anderson?
I second.
Okay, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Uh, the second item is approval of the July 27th, uh, meeting minutes. And, uh, Commissioners, any changes to that item? Staff, any changes?
No changes from staff.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Commissioner Watt approve, or makes a motion?
I second.
All right. And a second from Commissioner Roberts. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Okay, onto the third item of the agenda, which is a public hearing for KMM Incorporated for development stage planned unit development to allow interim mining on the east and southwest areas of the existing quarry. Conditional use permit amendment to allow work within the Minnesota River floodplain located at 1020 Cliff Road West. And City Planner Deb Garros will provide a presentation of the item and an overview, uh, of what's provided in the background report, and then we will open it up for a public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to bring to your attention that we did receive a letter from the applicant today, um, and you all received a copy of it. Uh, there are three minor changes, uh, that they would like to see as part of the, um, conditions, and staff has reviewed those changes, and we have no, uh, issue with the changes as, uh, they presented in that letter. So with that, for, um, KMM, we have had, uh, they've had development out, uh, in the northwest, or excuse me, Minnesota River Quadrant, the northeast part of the MRQ, um, since the 50s. And we are on, um, a development project at this point in time that is, uh, related to a new concept that was approved here a couple of years ago, um, for the area. And what that, uh, includes are three of the larger property owners in the Minnesota River Quadrant, uh, came in, uh, talked to the council, and looked at, um, I'm sorry, let me back up. Uh, this is the subject site. It's, um, outlined in a purple area, and you can see the area of mining, um, primarily, uh, in the center part. Just wanted to draw your attention to the north part along the river. Uh, that is an area to remain as, uh, natural open space. Part of the area is used for wetland, um, banking, uh, but we're looking primarily at, uh, development on the area, uh, to the south. The subject site, uh, right now, the entire subject's holdings of, uh, KMM is about, uh, 578 acres. That's the area outlined in blue. Uh, and then the quarry area, uh, that has, currently has approval, um, is about 340 acres in the solid yellow. Uh, and then the dotted yellow on the easterly side, they're proposing to mine 46 acres, additional acres of land, and then, uh, the southwest, uh, another 26 acres of land. And this is, uh, consistent with what they received concept plan approval for last year. The, uh, pretty much the entire subject site, with the exception of a few parcels on the southeast, uh, are located within the flood fringe of the Minnesota River. So the application tonight also includes a conditional use permit amendment, uh, to allow them to work within the floodplain. Pretty much the way the city's floodplain ordinance is set up is that any work, uh, if you're moving, um, dirt, if you're filling, excavating, uh, pretty much any type of activity requires a conditional use permit. So, uh, the site has received previous, uh, approval for conditional use permits, and, uh, we'll look at that in a minute. Um, but this is something that is in keeping with what's, uh, been approved in the past for the project. As I stated, um, back in 2018, we had the three largest property owners come in and speak with the city council, um, about a concept, um, to, um, look at the Minnesota River Quadrant and also, um, the superfund site, which is on the McGowan property to the north of the Kramer Quarry, um, to take a look at options for potentially how that area could be redeveloped. Uh, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is in the process of reviewing that superfund site and how it should be cleaned up. Uh, and the, uh, three property owners came in and the city council, uh, liked their idea of, uh, potentially allowing, uh, KMM to do further mining, uh, if the quarry is to be, or excuse me, not the quarry, if the freeway landfill and freeway dump are to be dug out and that material moved someplace else. Um, this concept includes possibly moving that through the quarry area and then into the, um, Burnsville sanitary landfill or waste management landfill. So that would allow then, uh, further, um, mining in that area. So the lake would expand, uh, to the northeast. Uh, and then in addition to that, primarily have an area of mixed use land development and industrial development along the I-35 corridor. When the council took a look at that, they instructed, or they gave direction to both, uh, KMM and, um, the landfill operators to go back and go through their environmental reviews that were necessary, and then to come in, um, with plans to make the amendments to each of their respective, uh, planned unit developments to make these things happen. Uh, the most recent actual, uh, KMM PUD that the, uh, city approved was in 2016, and that's what this exhibit is. And I just wanted to draw your attention to, on the, uh, west side, there's a light or apple green kind of color. Uh, that is an edge treatment, uh, that was discussed, and we'll get into that a little bit further. And then also, um, along the, um, north side of what's proposed to be mined was another edge treatment that was contemplated. And basically, in 1994, when the planned unit development was established for the quarry, what they did is identify that once the quarrying comes within 300 feet of the extent or the end of their mining, that, uh, they would take a look at what type of edge treatments would be provided so that they could provide, uh, right-of-way needed for, uh, public streets, major streets, and then also, um, trail along the, um, area. And also to create some type of, um, a type of environment for especially the areas that would be public, um, beach or park, so that people can walk out, so you're not just walking directly into a hundred-foot drop. Uh, so that's kind of what those edge treatments are. And the one that, um, that we're looking at primarily, uh, with this application and what has been approved before is known as, uh, the shallow bay area graphic. And what this shows is basically, um, on the, uh, left-hand side, you've got the property line, and then, um, there is a 40-foot right-of-way generally. This would be for the north-south street, uh, that's in between the landfill and the quarry, and then also an east-west street, uh, along the northern edge of the, the landfill primarily. And then there is an area, uh, between that of natural space that, um, would be left open, and then the trail is circled in red, approximately a 10-foot trail. Uh, and then, again, uh, there will be some area that's either backfilled, uh, or left in its natural state. Um, but to have a shallow area for swimmers, uh, et cetera, as opposed to just dropping off, uh, into the main part of the quarry. The city updated its comprehensive plan here a couple of years ago, and in terms of the Minnesota River Quadrant and the area that we're looking at, primarily that large, uh, blue area is, uh, ultimately will be the lake that, um, forms after mining is completed, uh, within the quarry area. What's changing, um, with, uh, this application is on the southwest area. That area that's purple is identified for future industrial, and the majority of that area, uh, is 26 acres, and that's going to be mined. Um, so we have a change there. And, um, and that's, uh, the blue dotted line around is for a trail system, uh, local trail system around the lake. And then also there is a trail system to the north, which would be a regional corridor, uh, similar to the Black Dog Trail on the other side of the interstate. So then, their concept plan was approved by the council, and it's based on kind of that plan that was put together by the three property owners. Uh, this was approved in April of 2019, and, uh, the two areas of yellow are the areas that were proposed for mining, and, uh, council again, uh, felt that that, uh, was an area that made sense. So they did approve it. We included the, uh, planning background report from that. There were a lot of conditions and things. Uh, some of the conditions that are applicable, uh, to the mining, uh, have been brought forward in the conditions that are recommended tonight. Um, a lot of the other conditions have been taken care of because the applicant has already gone through their environmental review, and the city council, uh, determined that, uh, the information was adequate and that there was not a need for additional environmental review. So many of those, uh, conditions have already been taken care of because additional, uh, work and study has been done. Then the concept plan that, uh, is proposed is Exhibit 2, and it shows that area, uh, kind of the lighter green or apple green up in the north, staying in its natural state. Um, and that may stay as private open space, maybe public open space, but the idea is then to, uh, have a regional corridor connection that would connect up ultimately to the landfill site where the city does already have, uh, trail easements in place, uh, and then back up through the McGowan property and ultimately to the Black Dog Trail to the east. And what will happen then in the east area is after mining is completed in that area, um, the intention is then to come back and backfill, uh, and, um, raise the, uh, elevation so that they will have foundations for future development. Uh, and there may be a combination of some of the areas maybe not mined as deeply, uh, as others, um, or maybe all backfilled. It's really a combination of, uh, some future, um, I guess, research and planning that will be going on, but ultimately that's the idea, is to, uh, fill in those areas once they've been mined for redevelopment. And then the area that's shown with the hash marks, kind of, uh, on the north, um, northeast next to the pink mixed-use area, uh, that's an area, uh, that's a concept for, uh, future Lake Shore Park. Uh, the exact size of it and the exact location is not determined, but it's something that, uh, it's kind of a, a marker, if you will, for some type of, uh, um, park area to be located on the lakeshore. The applicant did provide a, um, uh, an operation and phasing plan. They're looking at, uh, basically, the fill-out of the rest of the mining, uh, approximately, um, 15 to 20 years. It could be more than that. It could be a little less. It really depends on market conditions and technology, but that's, uh, kind of the idea, uh, so that we're looking at, uh, 2040, probably the earliest, uh, that there will be, you know, the mining will be completed, and it, it may be, uh, beyond that. Then on the, uh, southeast side, you see that, and that green area, again, along the, uh, west, um, southwest and northwest, uh, is the, uh, is that edge treatment area that, uh, we looked at before. And one of the conditions that, uh, staff has indicated is on the east side, then, uh, we put in a condition, again, for when they're within 300 feet of that, uh, mining limit on the east, uh, to come in and look at edge treatments. That's one of the items that the applicant would like, uh, changed, instead of being within 300 feet of the east, to make that 300 feet of the north, because they intend on, uh, actually doing their mining from north to south. And, uh, from staff perspective, we don't have any issues with that, um, with that request. For the southwest part of the mine, uh, mining area, um, that the width of that edge treatment is about 220 feet, um, there is about 40 feet of right-of-way that's anticipated on that north-south road. Um, the landfill is already dedicated 40 feet, uh, in their plat, and ultimately when, uh, the KMM property is platted, um, they would be requested to dedicate 40 feet. So the red line there shows about the 40-foot line, uh, right-of-way, and then beyond that, uh, is another about, um, 80 feet, uh, plus or minus, and then the trail would start. And just in this corner with, um, with this graphic, it gets very close to this methane plant, which is intended to stay. So one of the conditions that we've included is to take a little bit closer look in this southwest area, uh, to see if that needs to be adjusted accordingly, just to make sure that a trail, uh, can be, uh, provided for within this area of the project site. And this is showing, uh, the same thing. This is the Semstone property, and there are a couple of conditions that are included that relate to Semstone. Um, Semstone is ultimately, uh, intended to go away or maybe be relocated at some point in time. Uh, and, uh, some of the things that need to be considered as we move on and get closer to the actual, um, development, uh, that comes after the mining is done, is at what point, at what time do these things start occurring? You know, when does the trail get constructed? Um, when does the right-of-way be provided? Those types of things. And I just wanted to indicate on here that the, based on the graphic, uh, approximately where the trail and the mining edge would be, uh, based on that graphic. So that's just a matter of timing and looking into the future that those types of things, uh, will need to be looked at. In terms of the regional trail corridor, we just noted, uh, in the background report, and obviously, we indicated, part of the site is used for their wetland, um, banking program, um, so we know that, but there are some canals and, uh, different things that have just, uh, been used over the years, um, you know, uh, some different, um, wetlands and, and whatnot that are in the area. So we just include it again, um, in the future, when we come in and look at development for the area, to take a look at some of these places to find out where there is upland for a trail, to get an idea, again, of, uh, cost, feasibility, and, um, where something ultimately could go. And this regional trail would be something that, uh, most likely we would be looking at, um, getting the, uh, a trail corridor through there, but then the city, uh, in combination with perhaps county, um, state, maybe metropolitan council actually responsible for construction of that trail. So the recommendations are, uh, there are a number on here. Uh, the majority of them are really related, uh, to the engineering items, and we have our city engineer, Jen Desroot here, and then also, uh, Ryan Peterson, if there are particular questions. Um, in terms of engineering, there are three, uh, areas that they addressed, one being the drinking water supply. Um, there are, obviously, the quarry, um, water, de-watering is, is used for, uh, public drinking water supply, and the applicant and the city have worked together for years on that. Um, this project is, uh, will not, uh, have any negative, uh, effect on that. Uh, it'll continue to be that resource, and it's, uh, actually more of a resource regionally. It does affect, uh, City of Savage as well. And by lessening impact on some of the aquifers through this de-watering, um, there is a ben, a benefit, uh, to the region as well as to the city, um, with this. But they are looking at, uh, and if you have, uh, particular questions, um, you can ask, um, our engineering staff. They are looking at, or have been working with KMM on a public improvement agreement, um, to talk about, uh, to phase water intake improvement and how that will be structured. So that is a condition that's included. Um, mining depth, this is something that was part of the concept PUD, and it's something that's already been discussed in the past, so it's just brought forward with this application. Uh, water pressure fluctuations. With that Semstone plant, uh, there are some, uh, issues that sometimes occur, uh, because of that site. So they're taking a look at how, um, those pressure fluctuations can be addressed, um, looking at, um, options, and one of the conditions is that the applicant, again, continue to work with Semstone and the city to, uh, address, uh, that water hammering, uh, that can cause, um, breaks or issues with, uh, some of the water lines in the area. And the applicant, um, has agreed to do that, and they have been doing that in the past. So that's another, kind of bringing that, uh, condition forward. And then also, another item related to Semstone is a condition to help, uh, reduce water pressure spikes, um, for the infrastructure for both. And again, continuing on that. The third issue area is related to vibrations, and that's really related to blasting. And, um, the applicant, they do blasting, of course, as part of the mining operation. They've done it, you know, for 50-plus years. Um, they do have a, um, a very controlled way that they do the blasting, but sometimes there are complaints, uh, that come into the city, and then we try to, to work those out. Uh, so there's another condition, that they just continue to take the same measures that they have always been doing to, um, try to minimize those vibrations, uh, during the blasting operations. And with that, we'll go through the, um, items for the recommendations. Again, it is a recommendation to approve. Um, the items that the applicant has requested be modified are for number three, and this is, again, uh, dealing with that, um, condition. Instead of doing the, um, uh, when the mining area reaches 300 feet from the easterly, um, side of where they propose to mine or closest to the highway, they're requesting we change that to the north. So it'd be 300 feet to the north, because again, they're mining from north to south, not totally east, um, or west to east. And staff has no issue with that. Number eight, um, the conditions of the previously approved, um, applications, PUDs, CUPs, et cetera, um, will continue to remain in force and effect unless they're superseded by the conditions and the application here. And again, staff has no issue with that change. And the last item, uh, that the applicant has, uh, redes, or requested to be addressed is item number 17, and this is KMM, uh, shall continue to work with their Semstone, uh, to look at reducing pressure spikes, uh, to the city and Semstone's water infrastructure. And the applicant is asking that we add as is reasonable and practicable. And again, staff has, uh, no issues with that. With that, staff is working approval. There are, uh, 20 conditions, and we can go through, um, any of those if there are particular questions that Planning Commission, um, or the applicant have beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Uh, at this point, I guess I will open it up to the commission for questions from Ms. Garros. Commissioner John?
So they're moving over to the east, I noticed, and it gets really close to the freeway there. Are there any concerns about erosion or anything like that when you're digging that close to the major freeway?
Uh, we did, uh, oops, sorry, wrong side, wrong way. Um, we did submit this to the, uh, Minnesota Department of Natural Re, or Department of Natural Resources, MINDOT, and then also, uh, the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. MINDOT does not have, uh, any issues with that. And this is a little bit different because you're dealing with stone as opposed to dirt. Um, so they are keeping far enough away from that right-of-way area, um, to be able to avoid that. And that's part of, to some of the additional work that'll be done when they start getting closer to those mining limits, um, as to more, not so much, I think, an issue of when they do the mining, but when they do the reclamation, how does that occur? Um, and I think, if, I don't know, Jen, if you have any issues with, uh, as far as, we've not had any issues with erosion control, um, uh, on the site. They do have stormwater ponds. They do, uh, implement measures to make sure that they don't have, um, issues with either collapses or, um, water pollution, those types of things.
Thank you. Commissioner John, I think the applicant is here tonight, so we can ask that question of them too in a moment. Are there any other questions for Ms. Garros? All right, very good. Uh, if the applicant is here, and I believe it's these fine folks sitting behind me, uh, would you like to speak to, uh, the item in front of us right now?
Sure. Um, good evening. My name is Kirsten Polly. I'm with Sunday Engineering, working with, uh, KMM on this application, and, um, that's being considered tonight. And, um, I think that, um, Deb gave a great overview of the project. We have been in front of the city on a number of occasions with this concept. We've gone through the environmental review. Um, so I feel like that there's been a really thorough explanation. Um, I do have a couple of comments, and, and of course, we're here to answer any questions that you may have or the public may have. Um, but, um, just a few clarifications. Um, the eastern mining area will be mined from the south to the north. And that's why that northern, and, and this was a change that, that we just submitted to this, not a change, but some details we just submitted to the city. So that's what, um, is bringing about that proposed request to the northern property line. And that will enable that area to be reclaimed more efficiently and more timely, um, by mining in that direction. So that's, that's that point to clarify. Um, the other, um, point that I wanted to make was the, the Semstone operations as well as the methane, um, energy facility, those facilities are located on KMM property and are operating through leases. So whether or not they will, you know, remain, both of those entities may have a life and there may be final development that, uh, does not include them. That's just to be determined in the future, which is part of the, the idea of some of this concept planning and looking at more detail in the future as we get closer to development. Um, and then, um, to address your question on the, the setback from the highway, we did look at slope stability, and it's a 300-foot setback from the ri, the right-of-way along the freeway there. And it is bedrock, so it's a much more stable slope. But that slope stability is part of the overall design, as well as engineered backfill to bring that area up to a buildable, usable, um, condition that can support the mixed use and, um, potential development for that area that's envisioned. So I think with those clarifications, um, I really am here to answer any questions. And again, if the, if the, um, public has any questions, be happy to try to answer those as well.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
You said, just a quick question. You said that the, the eastern portion of the, I'm looking at the map of the yellow dotted line that we're talking about. You're saying that's 300 feet from the highway?
Yes. From the highway right-of-way. The right-of-way. So from the edge of the highway, it's even more. So, uh, the scale on, on this map, so would it, uh, can I point? Would it be helpful to point?
Oh, pointer doesn't work.
You, you see what I'm looking at? The upper right corner?
Yep.
Where the yellow dotted line is on the east side?
Correct. That upper, where the, the upper yellow north-south?
Yeah.
That's, that's, um, that's 300, that's about 300 feet, right, Chris? I mean, it's, yeah, it's over 300 feet from the center of the park.
I believe we used 400 on that, that was the final.
Yep. And Commissioners, where the, um, you know, where the property line kind of jogs in there to the west, um, that was the former Volkswagen site. So there was a, you know, there's another property in between the highway and, uh, the KMM property. So it's hard because you're looking at such a huge property. Uh, so it looks like it's very close, but they, it is actually, um, as they said, 300, 400 feet from where the right-of-way starts.
Other questions for the applicant?
I have one or two questions. Uh, just so the residents of Burnsville can kind of get an idea of the timeline and the process, where are you in negotiations with the state right now as far as, um, I guess, the preferred option that the city is looking for with the freeway?
option that the city is looking for with the freeway landfill and with the waste management landfill? Are there updates that you can provide to us at this time from your side of things?
Yeah, I think you can maybe jump in on this too, but my understanding is, is that the Burnsville Waste Management Landfill is working on their environmental review, both this project as well as the Burnsville Landfill Expansion Require Environmental Review. Theirs is environmental impact statement because of the thresholds that they are exceeding in terms of environmental review. So that process is a little bit longer. And then I believe that there's, John, as far as the freeway, the freeway and the PCA closure, can you give a little insight into that?
I can address that, thanks. I'm John Revista, I'm Chief Operating Officer for Kramer Mining.
So you might want to step over to the microphone. Thank you.
You arranged my hearing aids that always fall off. So I'm John Revista, Chief Operating Officer for Kramer Mining. In regards to freeway landfill, MPCA, Waste Management, Burnsville Sanitary Landfill, and Kramer, we still are very engaged in that process. We have nothing that would, we could report that as we have any binding documents or agreements with freeway landfill. We do have agreements with Burnsville Sanitary Landfill and Kramer to handle the waste should we be successful. And that's going to be, and that relationship and those agreements will be part of our bid package as far as a dig and haul option as opposed to a dig and mine option, the big green pyramid versus a developable site. So we're still very engaged with that. We're very open and still engaged with the MPCA, the state. We've been in front of, I think, I can't, I think every senator and representative that has either, you know, regional responsibilities or to that site, we've been in front of all of them, and others. So, and we remain there. I can't speak to where the freeway landfill owners and the MPCA are at. I don't know that, so. But we're still there, we're still engaged, we still want to do this project. We still believe it's a, you know, whether we have a, an agreement with freeway landfill or not, that for the region, the best solution, we've been excited about a better solution from day one, whether we're ownership or not, let's get the waste moved, let's develop that area, let's make it beneficial for the region. Happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioner John?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the city of Burnsville and the city of Savage, obviously. You guys are pumping out water so that we don't have our water contaminated, and that's a huge benefit to our cities. And, I mean, you don't have to go any further than Flint, Michigan, to know how bad things can get really quickly. And so I very much appreciate that you guys are willing to do that for us and...
It's been a great partnership, and we're working right now with Ryan and the city on an expansion of that. And that'll be something that I'm very, very confident is going to happen in the very near future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. And I did think of, well, I might save that. This is a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing now at 7:03 PM. Is there anybody on the telephone or online that wishes to speak to this item? Okay.
There are none.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dean. Is there anybody in the chambers who would like to speak to this item? Very good. So I will close the public hearing at 7:04 PM, and I will turn it back to the commissioners for any discussion or further questions. Commissioner Wad?
My only comment is that this is a pretty cool, kind of the long-term development is going to be pretty cool. And so I'm thrilled to see that that's still being taken into consideration and, yeah, I hope to be around to see this happen. I know it's a long, I know it's a long road, but it's going to be pretty awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner John?
Just to piggyback on those comments, I think, I want to appreciate how much work the staff did on putting this together. You have to realize how big of this project is for the city and how easy it would be to put blinders on and not cross every T and dot every I. But you guys have gone above and beyond in doing that and to ensure that everything's in place and we're not risking safety to get to that end goal that could easily be done.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
I actually did have a little bit of a question. When you were talking about the beach development there, I was just kind of curious, because it does show, it does do a pretty significant drop-off. How deep is it when it's going to get to the point where it's going to drop off? Is it going to be well above people's heads, or is that any kind of a safety concern at all?
Commissioner, I could answer that question for you. The design and the details will be flushed out, but the idea is to have a gentle slope for a distance so that there's no steep drop-off. By the time that it gets steep drop-off, unless you're under the giant, perhaps, you will be underwater anyway, so there's not going to be that kind of a steep drop-off. And there is potential for some lake level fluctuations, and that will be accounted for as well. But that certainly is part of the design. So it's, you know, whether it's 60 feet out or 80 feet out before there's a drop-off and a gentle gradual decline before you hit the edge of the quarry.
And I have a question for you. How large would the lake actually be? How many acres once it's fully, I guess, filled?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's going to be probably in that 340 to 380, depending upon edge treatments, maybe even a little bit more of lake area because the, well, it's probably going to be closer to 400, I would guess, because you've got your mining limits, your quarry limits, and then the edge treatments will bring that shallow bay area closer to the property line. And so that will expand that overall area somewhat of lake area. And the current southeastern expansion area will also become lake area. The eastern expansion area, or the southwestern, the eastern expansion area will be developable, but the southwestern will be additional lake area. So I guess that comes out to be closer to the 400-ish kind of general range.
So as comparison, that's about 100 acres bigger than Crystal Lake. So it's going to be a pretty nice-sized lake in Burnsville. I had a question, Ms. Garros, regarding one of the conditions. Sorry, let me pull that up really quick here. One of the conditions requires plating and some development fees that will be paid at the time of plating. Will that, I guess, mitigate any future fees? Would any future developers be required to pay any of those plating fees for replating? Would they need to pay any of those development fees when they're developing? I guess, can you explain the process of that, or is this a one-time plating fee and future development would not have to pay those costs?
Sure. I think just we wanted to get on paper, so the applicant is, has this too, is, you know, they know what is happening. Usually, what happens at the time of plat, it really depends on how the property is platted. Any areas that are platted into lots and blocks for development, park dedication is collected on that. And then in addition, through the plat process, we do obtain the right-of-way for streets, trails, and those types of things. Now, if part of it is platted into lots and blocks, but other parts are left as outlots, they're not required to pay those fees at that point in time. A lot of developers will leave outlots as well because there's a lesser tax burden on them as an outlot. And then those outlots, before anything can develop, those need to be platted. And so it goes that, in that direction. These are, this is generally how the city operates, but I think just to make sure, you know, for the applicant, it's actually been part of their PUD, at least since the concept and maybe prior to that, just so that it is identified that they definitely can do outlots and how, you know, the fees are when they come due.
Very good. Thank you, that helps. Other questions? I'm going to ask one more question of the applicant. Just to be a thorn, on condition 17, adding the language reasonable and practical, practicable, I guess to me is adding ambiguity to an already ambiguous condition. What measures are you taking with Semstone to mitigate the issues with the pressure spikes?
So there has been conversations with Semstone and KMM to determine the cause of the problem, what potential solutions there may be, and those have been done in conjunction with Ryan. And the current thought is drilling their, a well to serve the facility. So it may be that it brings some ambiguity, but the fact of the matter is, is there's been collaboration and cooperation and movement in the right direction on this issue, and that's what the intent is. And the idea is, is the solution has to be reasonable, it's got to be practical, and it looks like we're heading in the right direction there and coming to a resolution.
Well, and I think that's fair. I think that, I mean, it's kind of in good faith on, you know, the city's part, accepting that, it's in good faith on your part, and it's in good faith on Semstone's part. So I appreciate that, and I think it's good that it's at least memorialized that you're continuing to work with those, or work that relationship to create a solution. So thank you.
And then one other comment too regarding the plating. So, you know, in terms of when that gets platted, again, that's when it's ready for future development. And because there's still time, and there's still some uncertainty, and we don't know where the Burnsville, the freeway landfill, you know, how that's going to come in, and the, so because of some of these unknowns, that plating and those fees and everything, you know, that will be sometime in the future.
Very good. Any final questions or comments? All right, it is time for a motion. Yes, sir, Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, if everybody is good with this, two things. One, there is a lot of stuff on this. Staff, nice job, nice job. A lot of information to go through. I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the Development Stage PUD Amendment to expand mining for 72 additional acres and CUP Amendment to allow work within the Minnesota River Flood Plains subject to the following 20 conditions with the changes on condition 3, 8, and 17, as were submitted to us, be accepted as well with those changes.
Very good. Commissioner Wad?
I will second the motion.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
And this item will go to the City Council next week at their Tuesday meeting, and it will be put on their consent agenda because it's been recommended unanimously for approval.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, take care. All right, I will move on momentarily here. All right, so that brings us to item number four this evening, which is going to be presented by Ms. Madden regarding building expression. Ms. Madden?
Thank you, Chair. So this work plan item, so I'll start from the beginning. Late last year, a large entity within the city of Burnsville reached out to city staff about a rebranding effort that they were potentially going to undergo sometime in the coming months. And one of the items that they wanted to talk about, of course, with rebranding, is signage. And Burnsville sign ordinance, you guys have seen many times over the last two years. And even with all those changes, signage is kind of a technology-based industry, so it changes and it kind of goes with the market. So one of the things that they wanted to do, they called it building expression, while we as a staff had not heard that term before, and told them that what they wanted to do, if they wanted to do it, this property owner happened to be under a planned unit development, they could amend their planned unit development to do what they wanted to do as far as large swathes of signage, because we do have size limits for signage anywhere in the city, whether you're under a PUD or a CUP or not. So we said that they could do that, but we would research the topic and bring it to Planning Commission. So kind of one of the last-minute items that we added to the 2020 work plan was this title, building expression. So while we've been looking into it, kind of what we've learned is that building expression isn't a concrete term. It is kind of something that maybe is used from a marketing lens, and it steals from a concept known as architectural expression, which is where, let's say, kind of in a floaty term, where the personality or the ideals of the architect are expressed in the way that the buildings are designed. So for building expression, the idea that these marketing people came up with was that the ideals and the image of the building owner or the tenant is expressed through the design of the exterior of the building. So the ways that the, this kind of term practically comes about, maybe they are calling it building expression, but practically, it's signage is what it is. So some of the options to consider tonight, after some of the staff research, are pretty much related to signage, and most of the research that I did by reaching out to our market cities has to do with signage requests that other cities have received and what it has looked like to get to this point of what was described to us as architectural expression. So the person who brought this up to us, their idea of building expression was a building wrap or some sort of wall decal that you might see on the interior of a building, but of course manufactured in order to be applied to the exterior of a building, weather resistant, things like that. The other idea that was brought up was what if instead of affixing something to the building, we utilize building materials themselves to illustrate this concept? So this was seen previously this year as we looked into the Fire Station 1 project and the large one that was expressed on that building, that's a building expression of the building owner or tenant. And so we've kind of been able to see it used practically now, both in the city and then now as I've talked to some people outside of the city. So some of the comments that we received were actually quite a lot, almost, I'll say every city planner that I talked to had some concerns about the building wrap concept, mainly durability, could this be weather resistant, could it be sun-resistant, is this better as a temporary signage solution rather than a permanent signage solution? There were also some current concerns on just the sign installation, the length of it because of those reasons, and the size of it as a whole, because most cities, just like Burnsville, do have maximum sign limitations, whether it's a percentage of the building can be covered in signage, or it's just a flat number. So in Burnsville, we utilize both. It's a percentage, but up to a point. And typically, we don't see requests to go above that point. Also in Burnsville and many other cities, painted signage is not allowed for some of those similar reasons. When you see things like murals, there are specific paint types that are used in those types of installations so that they can last for 50 years. That doesn't mean that every painted sign would utilize that particular type of material, so that's why it's not a permitted wall sign material in Burnsville, or one of the reasons. Some of the other comments that we, I got back from other city planners when I asked them what about if they did something like what we did with Fire Station 1, and generally, everyone was like, oh, yes, we don't regulate the color of buildings in our city unless it's in some sort of specific town home development or PUD, and we don't regulate patterns in the design. So probably we would approve something just like you did if we got a request for something like this. Again, painting brick is, may not be allowed for signage, but painted brick is allowed as an exterior material. That's a recent... but painted brick is allowed as an exterior material. That's a recent change, within the last couple of years. Um, and then one city planner that I talked to was adamant that plastic was not an approved building material. Um, so any viewing of this type of wall decal would need to be a signage, because it, we, they didn't want to open that up, that, that plastic and vinyl was a, an approved exterior material. Um, so just, uh, it's a little tiny here, but some of the, um, I reached out to our market cities, got some feedback. I'd say most of the cities that I talked to had not really received requests for this type of a, a sign, whether, and I was specifically asking at this point about building wraps and wall decals. Uh, the ones that did either approved it as just a generic sign permit, because their sign ordinances allowed kind of some flexibility in the material of a sign. Uh, Burnsville does not. I will get to that. Um, and, or it was through a PUD or some other sort of plan. So, I've got some images later in the PowerPoint where I'll kind of show you the different areas and where they've been approved, at least that were identified to me through my conversations with, uh, different planning offices around the metro. Um, some concerns with, um, Burnsville's ordinance for, uh, sign materials is, so for wall signage, permanent wall signage, we, um, ask that, uh, wall signs be constructed of individual channel raised letters that are a minimum of an inch in depth. Generally, if you're going to a retail establishment, um, most anywhere, that's kind of how signs look. You know, they have their message, and it's in some sort of a lettering. Uh, we do allow, um, as a portion of the total sign area, uh, what's called a cabinet sign, but it does have to be subordinate to the channel letters. A cabinet sign is a, um, internally lit box sign, essentially. Standalone cabinet signs are not allowed within the city. Uh, flat signage, panel signage is not allowed within the city, except by a conditional use permit and integrated into the design of the building. Or in some of the older, you'll, you'll see this particularly in industrial buildings. Um, they'll all kind of have a panel outside, has the name, the tenant, everyone uses the same font. That's some sort of a PUD approval generally, or it predates the sign ordinance as it stands. Um, so you actually do see that quite a, all over the place in Burnsville, particularly in our industrial districts. Um, for temporary signage, as we went over earlier this year and last year and the year before, um, there's temporary, uh, freestanding signage, and there's temporary banner signs. A wall decal is not a banner. So, one of the options to consider could be, um, incorporating an additional type of temporary signage, um, for a wall decal or a building wrap or something like that. But it would still be limited to those size requirements that are, um, in the ordinance and haven't changed much over the years. Um, so, moving on, here are some examples. So, I did talk to, uh, some planning staff in Bloomington. Uh, so this is the Crayola Experience at the Mall of America, and this was approved as signage through the Mall of America Master Plan. Um, they have their master plan, they have their planned unit development, and they have a master sign plan. So, there are a lot of elements at work here. This was approved, not administratively, but this is a, uh, the equivalent of coming in through a PUD amendment, like we would see. Yes.
What type of sign are we looking at, and which part of the signage?
So, the, kind of the color shifting, that is building wrap.
Okay.
So, that, similar to how you would see a bus wrap.
I, yep.
Yep.
Okay. But in, on top of that, they have the Crayola.
They have an actual sign. Yes.
So, the building wrap is?
So, there's kind of layers of their signage here, as well as the fascia around it. So, this is kind of a whole. And when I talked to the city planner, he was explaining that too, that this is, this is kind of multiple elements at play as part of their branding here.
Yeah.
Um, but it was not approved administratively. It did, it was approved as part of their kind of master plan. Um, from a, uh, city staff, uh, perspective, there were some concerns. So, the sign is about five or six years old, and there's already some sun damage to the sign. Um, so they did express that if they were asked to do something like this again, that they may try to add some conditions to it, or, uh, just talk about it more with an applicant, just because they've been able to see that there is damage to it after, definitely now after five or six years, but even soon after installation with, um, sun and, um, just weather concerns, durability concerns. Um, but that they haven't really gotten any requests for it outside of the Mall of America, which is kind of its own, um, beast. A sign of this size would not meet, um, Burnsville's ordinance. However, um, in Bloomington, even though they're limited by the percentage of the building, the Mall of America is, is a huge building. So, they have quite a lot of, um, allotted signage for the whole building, um, buildings at this point. Um, so, uh, this location is in Minnetonka, and it incorporates both a wall, uh, decal and window decal. Um, so this was approved as part of signage, and, um, based on their requirement and their ordinance for signage size, it did meet theirs and was approved administratively through a sign permit. Um, part of that is because window signage typically doesn't require a sign permit. In Burnsville in particular, um, window signage can cover up to thirty-five percent of the windows on the building. So, that's, um, kind of how you could see that being administered. And you, uh, I'm sure have seen plenty of window signs using this decal, um, technology, I'll say, um, throughout the city and everywhere. Um, this is a wall decal that was approved as exterior signage in Blaine. Um, so this was approved again through a sign permit, so administratively, typical sign permit process. Um, their city, city planner was able to approve this because in Blaine, they don't have, uh, materials requirements for wall signs. So, um, that was able to include this type of a, a decal onto the building. Um, this is a really good example of building expression, because it's not showing you, um, specifically who's in the building, but you maybe are able to guess what the tenant or owner of this building is based on their style of their imagery on the building. Yes.
Is the sign the large rectangle, or is it the smaller rectangle that has the photograph of the, confined to the photograph of the motorcycle?
So, um, the, from what they told me, the sign that was applied for as part of the sign permit included the entire face
Okay.
of this white area. So, they, they applied for three hundred feet of signage.
Okay.
Um, that would not be, meet Burnsville's ordinance. We have a maximum three hundred square feet. That's our, so percentage up to a point, and that point is, is three hundred square feet. Yes.
So, not shown in this photograph, but then does the right side of that building also contain a sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so some of the other cities that I talked to, um, in Eagan, this is part of the Vikings complex, and they have, um, so this is the parking area and not specifically their building. Their building, they utilize more of the building materials. Um, this, uh, portion of it on the parking garage, though, where they have, um, images of the team and just various, uh, marketing materials, this was approved as signage, and it was approved by their council as a planned unit development. They have not received any other requests for this type of signage at all in Eagan, other than this one, um, and they would only have been able to do it through a planned unit development. And the property owner in Burnsville that kind of sparked this discussion, it would have been the same thing, where with what they were proposing, it would have had to have been an amendment of their planned unit development. And then, um, as we talked about earlier, kind of the other, um, facet of this building expression is, um, utilization of the existing building materials to do this messaging, or non-messaging in this case. So, with the large one on Fire Station One, um, it was composed of the exact same material, but in a different color of the material behind it. So, um, this was approved as a building material, because our ordinance does not regulate color or patterns in the building materials. I did talk to someone, um, I'm sorry, I'll get you in just a second. Um, they gave an example, but, um, I didn't, wasn't able to find an image of it, because it's kind of new, uh, where a, uh, tenant had removed the, uh, the materials from the wall and put their sign back up on top of new color impregnated background so that they didn't have to apply to expand their sign area, because it was just the blue backer. Um, they, uh, added new stucco in blue to be the backer of their, their logo, so that their sign itself could be larger. So, some good examples. Uh, yes, Commissioner Wad?
That's clever. So, this, uh, this number one, is it, uh, it's wall panel material? Is it flush with the rest of the wall panel, or, so it's not, doesn't stick out, it's just flush, and it's just a change in color of the wall panel? Okay.
Yep. It does not stick out at all. It'll, it's just wall material.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Very interesting. So, okay. So, I've kind of put together some options to consider, um, for what, uh, we could do to kind of address this, um, concept. So, we could create an ordinance provision. So, there are two sections here. Ten nineteen is special requirements in business districts, and ten twenty-three is special requirements in industrial districts. Um, and that business does incorporate mixed use, if you're curious. Um, so, that would address building expression as it relates to exterior building materials. Um, as a comment, as I've kind of shown you this evening, um, we were able to make that work. Um, so far, as the ordinance stands, if someone wanted to utilize building materials. Um, but we could still add more information under there if we wanted to specifically address this concept. Um, second option, we could create an ordinance provision, provision under ten thirty, which is the sign ordinance. So, we could address building expression as it relates to signage, whether it's temporary signage or permanent signage. Um, the cities that I talked to that use these kind of building expression-type, uh, strategies, uh, where it was a wall decal or a building wrap, um, they so far have been installed specifically as permanent signage. Um, but we could do, we could do either. We would need to really look at our sign ordinance based on the materials that are required of a permanent sign right now. Um, whereas for temporary signage, um, we allow banners, but we could shift something to create a new definition and allow this type of a, um, a fixed material, uh, whether it's a wall decal or building wrap or something like that. Uh, option three is to leave the ordinance as is. Um, we can approve administratively the building materials. Um, building wraps or decals would not be allowed as signage construction, um, administratively, but an applicant could request through a PUD approval. Um, or, you know, others. So, we're open to any ideas that you may have about how to address this land use issue. Um, if you wanted to kind of come up with your own idea, we would add a little bit more weeks to our timeline for putting through this type of an ordinance amendment for the work plan, um, just to bring back some more research, uh, to the group for consideration. Um, but I am open to, uh, discussion at this point. So, we are seeking direction of a general consensus, um, of what we could do on if an ordinance amendment is needed. So, I'm open for questions or for discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Commissioner Wad?
I have another question.
Yes.
What?
Temporary, when a sign is temporary, when, uh, what does temporary mean? Is it a year, or is it six months?
So, under our ordinance, it's a hundred and nine, eighty days, a hundred and eighty days.
Three months?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
As we're always looking to streamline the process from, um, a tenant through this to whatever, and through staff, when you look at this as staff, you know, number three, leaving it the way it is and giving you guys the ability to basically approve some things through there, what's, what's the easiest option for you guys? Is that a weighted question?
It's kind of weighted. Um, we don't know if we're going to continue to get requests like this. So far, we've received the one, um, major, um, heavily considering it request, and, um, no matter what that applicant wanted to do, an amendment of their PUD is going to be necessary.
Um, if, if I can add, um, one of the concerns I see, um, some of these applications are rather large that we've seen, and we do have a cap on our current signage that says, was it?
Three hundred?
For permanent, three hundred square feet. So, if someone really wanted to dress up their building from top to bottom and, and do something bold, um, I think that, um, that could run into some problems at, um, approving something administratively as is if we kept with our current, our basic ordinance standards.
The challenge here for me is people wanting to use approved building materials to circumvent that size. So, if somebody were to use building materials, and it wouldn't currently under ordinance be considered a sign, they could make it, you know, half the, the front of their building, a thousand square feet, or whatever it is. Is that true?
So, it would be an expensive route to take. The, the one city that I talked to where someone did that, they went through serious expense to remove stucco and add new impregnated stucco behind it. Um, but it would, technically, yes, it could be an option. So, as an example, like, let's say they've got a parapet, you know, it's however many square feet, and their signage or their branding is just a red box with, um, you know, I'll just use Target as an example. With the white Target, they could make that Target logo the full three hundred square feet and use red paneling in the back. And that's, yes, that's part of their sign from their perspective, but from the ordinance's perspective, the only thing that is a sign is what's affixed to the building. So, they could do that, and they have. If you look at Target, their whole building shows you that they're Target, that their sign itself is only three hundred square feet. So, it kind of already happens, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they're like circumventing the ordinance so much as they're playing to the fact that they're a major brand, and that even the color red makes you think Target. So, uh, I don't think we'll see it a ton where people are going and changing their building materials up. I think if they were doing it, they were going to do it in a very intentional, stylistic way in the way that we saw the Fire Station building, more so than we're gonna see somebody just completely changing their facade, unless it's a scheduled upgrade. But I don't think that you'll see, there are only so many ways that you can make your building materials look like a, like a logo or like a sign. So, I don't know that we would see that too much, just because we would already be seeing it. But it's interesting.
So, what about retaining walls, then? If somebody were to use building material on retaining walls?
They could do that under the current ordinance. Yeah.
Part of the issue is the Supreme Court ruling for the, we can't regulate based on content.
Yeah. So, we can't say that content on your wall, it's a pattern.
I'm just envisioning the huge retaining wall, um, by Home Depot. And I don't know who owns that particular property, if that's Home Depot or the city or whomever, but I'm just thinking, you know, retaining walls is something that, I guess, could also have this, this non-signage signage, uh, if somebody wanted.
And they could already do that. Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. Commissioner John?
So, I, I'm assuming that our fear is that if we don't have some kind of ordinance in place, that we're gonna lose out on opportunities with different companies coming in?
Um, well, yeah, it's been brought forth because we do want to be able to give people that want to do this an option. Um, it does seem like, just based on what I've talked to from other cities, that it would be standard for anything that's a really large installation. It would be a planned unit development. Um, we've seen that in other places, both at the Mall of America and the Vikings facility. So, it would have to be something very similar to one of our very large planned unit developments in the city where they may consider something like this. Um, but we also wanted to bring it up because we want to give some of the small installations for something like this an option if, if they want to. So, an administrative way to do that could be allowing it as a, either a temporary sign or a permanent sign, some sort of a decal. Maybe it's not a full building wrap, but it could be a, a wall decal.
Would the, would the city would still have some kind of, uh, oversight on what goes where? So, we don't have, you know, stripes going next to plads or anything crazy like that?
We can regulate, um, size, overall size, duration, and, um, in a way, location, but not too much of a location. Uh, most of that is the applicant's planning to do. But when I approve or review a sign permit, um, it's regulated specifically for, yeah, size, construction materials, and placement, and that's, that's it. Not what it looks like.
And that's if it, if it just goes through administratively, right?
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily a PUD or something that has to go behind, in front of the council or anything along those lines?
Yeah.
Okay.
And generally, what it looks like, we, we won't comment on anyway, even if it was something that went to council.
So, help me out with the wraps, the, the motorcycle as an example, and let's ignore the giant white part, uh, and just envision that that motorcycle is three hundred square feet or less. That particular wrap, how would that be handled if somebody wanted that in Burnsville right now?
It would be denied. So, because it doesn't meet the construction materials requirements of a wall sign, um, it wouldn't be approved. Um, so we would, I'm not really sure. I guess in that case, it would depend on loc- location. If it was an existing PUD and they wanted to do a full rebranding of their building, we could process a minor planned unit development amendment. If it was an existing PUD and they wanted to do a full rebranding of their building, we could process a minor plan unit development amendment. Maybe that would be something we would recommend to them. If it wasn't a plan unit development, we would try to work with the property owner, I guess, to see if there's some other way that they could accomplish their goal. But it would, it would be denied just because it doesn't meet the construction requirements.
And the ordinance really is set up now for durability of construction materials. So when you look into something like this that is not so durable and is only, you know, maybe five years or so, the ordinance just doesn't, it isn't just set up at all to address that. So it's kind of why, why we're here.
If I may add, I mean, one of the options would be, we'd give them the option to amend the ordinance. And of course, you know, oftentimes, the staff will bring stuff to the planning commission. Oftentimes, we'll hear new trends in the market and multiple inquiries about what people want to do. And that's our trigger to say, hey, you know, maybe it's time to reevaluate, reevaluate our ordinances and, and bring something to you. And that's kind of why we're here today.
See, it's just kind of backwards. Like, I don't want to propose that we add an ordinance or, or create an ordinance. It's more, what can we winnow away from our existing ordinances to make this feasible? But it sounds like there's a lot of options with the ordinances the way that they're currently written where if somebody wanted to do this, they theoretically could find a, an avenue to do it.
For a building wrap or a wall decal, there currently wouldn't be an avenue for them to do it unless they applied to him in the ordinance or were some, are part of some sort of planning and development proposal, just because of the construction requirements. So because temporary signage that's on a wall, it's a banner. That's what's allowed. And permanent signage that's on a wall is lettering. So there are panel signs within the city and we, for example, and again, this was kind of part of an older industrial building, but when Bricksworth Brewing Company came in, they wanted to do painted sign. We worked with them. They settled for, or I guess we compromised together with panel signage because that was an industrial building that is existing that had panel signage. However, it was one where the property owner himself or themselves required a specific type of panel signage. And their PUD allowed them to have one that's more decorative. But it was still panel. So it was not that raised lettering that is required by the ordinance, but through their PUD, they were able to, to deviate from that. But again, it is, it is a city council approved process, not a, an administrative process.
Is, is variance an option for something that's denied or is, or is it really PUD?
Just based on meeting the, the test and the statutory requirements for a variance. Not created by the property owner, practical difficulty, it wouldn't need it. Yeah.
Got it. If I may comment, I think it, you know, thinking of the long-term health and vitality of our city, I think we do want to think about ways to accommodate new types of signage and to be able to allow building owners and tenants to, you know, express themselves. On one hand, on the other hand, you know, building wraps, as was kind of laid out by the Crayola signs at the Mall of America, they have a shorter lifespan. And maybe, maybe there's a, you know, a, a longer temporary sign that would apply to building wraps. So allow people to put up building wraps. Maybe it's a one-year deal or a five-year deal. I'm thinking of tenants that might, you know, be in a five-year lease. Okay, with a five-year lease, your sign is a five-year, you know, five-year temporary sign for your, for your property. You know, I'm thinking about like the Vikings facility where they've got pictures of the players interspersed onto their parking ramp. You know, those players are going to change and so those wraps most likely will get replaced as the players, players change. But yeah, I think you're right. You're on the right track in terms of building wraps and decals really not being a permanent building material. But like I say, I think it would behoove us to allow for sign, you know, to allow for signage that's maybe not too old-fashioned and stodgy. Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, I was going to make the comment of going from a tube TV to a four K TV. I mean, some of the signs that are old, old signs aren't that glamorous when you're putting up a brand-new building right next to it. But if the signage that could go up in a high-definition aspect that looks really good is a little more classier in some way than watching just an old sign that is just sitting there deteriorating on its own anyway. In regards to like the Viking stuff and that, yeah, those change all the time. So I mean, that, that really is something that does change. The temporary signage aspect of this could be set up to where we allow ourselves to look at that sign after a certain amount of time. If it's just a rap, we can maybe think about what we think would be a, a lifespan of a rap that we get to look at it then and say, that needs to be changed out to a new one. You know, that type of thing. Give us the option to say, you have two years with this rap. And at that time, we're, you know, you need to come in and request to have it approved again once it's been. And I don't know if that's too much work for staff to be looking at wraps and stuff. But hopefully, we're not getting the amount of requests that you're talking about, that it turns into a big deal.
And so, so far, there's been the one theoretical request. And there actually may be, we're not sure if it's going through, but one practical request, but as a temporary sign. That they want it as a temporary installation. So what you're talking about could be what you provide direction for this evening. And as far as like creating a, a new timeline, that would be, that is something, so right now, the ordinance for both a freestanding temporary sign and a banner, it limits you to a hundred and eighty days per calendar year. So a new signage type is what would be proposed with this type of ordinance if this is what we move forward with. And that could come with its own regulating provisions.
Because it's not a banner and it's, yeah, it's different than that totally.
It's a different piece of material.
Yeah.
And then there was something else you had said that I wanted to comment on, but I've lost it for right now.
How many times have Vikings changed players or?
Not enough sometimes.
The Packer fan in the crowd talk.
But that is something that we could do. Oh, what I was going to mention is that the ordinance already does have, and there are provisions about durability, disrepair and things like that, that can trigger a typically what would be the beginning of a code enforcement process, which would be an informative letter that there is a sign or there's a fence or, you know, typical things that are in disrepair, based on those complaints that we received. And I will say that for, I won't point fingers, but for the people that I talked to and some of the signs that you have seen in the slideshow tonight, there were, the staff member indicated they had, they do receive complaints of sun damage, picture quality and peeling. So it, it exists then, but, you know, I think we can all attest that we all receive complaints about every topic, so.
Commissioner John?
I would agree with what Commissioner Wadd and Commissioner Roberts was talking about with having something that would need to renew after so many years, whether it be five, like you had said, or the length of the lease. I, I think that's how we have to work with signs now, correct? Currently, no? Those, those are permanent? They're there forever?
Oh, well, permanent, typically they are removed when the, yeah, the tenant moves out because they're replaced with someone else. But there are, yeah, they're meant to be removed after they're defunct, I guess.
So would you all be open to having staff go back and explore a, I guess, a rap ordinance, adding some sort of, I mean, I, as it stands, it seems there could be really good uses for this, this concept. And there's also some consequences to that and that is peeling and, you know, the weather damage. So if we drafted some type of ordinance where we allow this as a semi-permanent type of usage and the ordinance said, okay, after ten years, it needs to be reevaluated or it needs to be replaced, something of that nature. I mean, it seems to me we'd be one of the first in the metro to have a comprehensive ordinance on this particular issue.
So we would be. So at least as far as people who responded to me that are in our market cities, no one has any specific provisions related to this at all. The cities that did, that you saw installations of, just based on the fact that they don't have construction materials requirements for wall signage, they were able to approve it as a wall sign. But actually, creating a new set of provisions, there were no examples that I could find. One that came slightly close, but may not, they may not be keeping it in their ordinance is there was a city, I want to say Woodbury, that has a corporate identity standard, but that's under their building materials ordinance, which is that within so many feet of the main entrance of the building, they can utilize both building materials and signage to present their corporate identity. So some content-based regulations do apply to that, which may be removed from their ordinance at some point. But the idea of that was for, like we talked about, for the Target entrance within so many feet, that they can kind of design that how they will and that it won't be counted towards their overall sign area for the property. So there are ways.
Well, I, okay. What I was going to say is, in that, I think what we're getting from all of us on the planning commission is we don't want to be left behind. I mean, Burnsville, what is exciting about this is we actually have the opportunity to be the forefront of what others may look at and say, okay, this is what we should look to adopt, which would be great. Which gives you guys the opportunity to write something because we are not ordinance professionals. You guys are in that perspective. So if our, leaving this meeting is that you come back with the understanding that we don't want to miss the opportunity of using these type of things, I think it's just the parameters of how we want to allow tenants to use these. If we can come up with that combination and make it work, then I think we're on the right track.
Yeah, and I was, I was going to say that, you know, what we need to do is provide a mechanism for, you know, for the review and approval of this new type of signage, whether it's an ordinance or a change to our existing ordinance or however. And I guess we'll kind of look to your recommendation for what is that right mechanism. The other thing I wanted to say is that if we're looking at, talking about building wraps and limiting the lifespan of them, probably the, one of the biggest factors to consider, one, you know, one is substrate, but the other one is color. You know, it's going to be the, anything that's got red in it is going to fade the fastest and blues are going to fade. And if, you know, if it's a black and white rap, it could look brand-new for twenty-five years. And so I, I don't know if that gets factored into this, you know, timeline. I guess maybe I'll let you guys ponder that, but, you know, something with red, it's going to fade after a couple of years. And it, you know, fades slowly and, you know, you don't notice it. And then when you do notice it, you notice it, so. Yes, Commissioner John?
A big fear I would have is what is going to end up on the side of a building that we're all going to be able to see? And being able to, I don't want to say the word regulate, but there are some things that could end up that we wouldn't want as a city to be up on, on a building or anything along those lines. So I would hope there would be some kind of a mechanism in there that would state, does that make sense?
It does make sense what you're saying. Based on the Supreme Court ruling for what we're allowed to do, we, we cannot regulate the content of a sign. We'll stop.
It's expression.
That's freedom of expression.
Yeah, I think the tools we use or could use is regulating on size. You know, making sure it stays under that three hundred square foot, you know, threshold. So if somebody wants to put something, you know, incendiary or profane, it's going to be small. Do you need more from us?
Um, maybe a little bit. Okay, so you would like, I'll just state and you can nod, staff to look into a tool that we could incorporate into the sign ordinance, not the building materials ordinance. And that would give an applicant the ability to install as, I'm going to say, semi-temporary signage or semi-permanent signage, wall decals, exterior wall decals. Okay.
Yes.
That's, that is something I can do. So because I, as a, a staff member, am probably going to need to do some more research on this, on what would be the best timing, as far as like actual timing for an installation. I don't know, originally I was hoping to have an ordinance before you, the first meeting in September, to give me some time to do a public hearing notice, but it might be the second meeting in September, so we'll, or later, we'll see. But this will come back to you, probably the next time you see it as an ordinance and as for public hearing. Then if what you see at that meeting isn't maybe what you had in mind, we can, you know, continue it. But that's what my schedule is then for this.
Very good. We'll work with your schedule. Do you, commissioners, have any concerns or want any input on if somebody were to use a site or to create a sign out of building material, putting some type of size threshold on that? Because I'm, I'm just picturing that, that giant retaining wall right now. And all it would take would be a couple of different colored bricks to make a massive Home Depot sign.
Commissioner Wadd? I don't have a strong concern about it because of the, the type of invest, you know, whoever's going to do that is going to make a very huge investment to do that. You know, they're not, this means taking the wall apart, putting it back together so that their sign, you know, their logo is part of this wall. It's, it's more than just painting the bricks. And so any of the, I mean, this is my feeling, any, any business or entity that's going to invest in some sort of subtle signage that's part of their architectural expression is going to be spending a lot of money to do it. And so that's why it's limited to companies like Target and, and, you know, they're going to be, be around for a long time.
Theoretically, if they're spending that amount of money, they're going to want it to look nice.
Yeah, they're wanting to, yeah, exactly. They're making a long-term investment. And, and to some, you know, I'm, I'm kind of only thinking about stores, but, because that's typically who would do that sort of thing. I don't have, I don't have a concern about that. You know, that's what the fire, the fire station is doing. It's a big giant number one that's just different color siding that's in the number, in the shape of number one.
Well, and if, if somebody's building something brand-new like that, it's going to come before us anyway, correct? I mean, theoretically, they're going to put in a request for a, a plan to build this new building. You know, we see a lot of that.
If they stay in the lane, it wouldn't come to us. We, we only get the things that are a little bit outside of the normal administrative process.
Yeah, that's right. And I mean, typically, you guys see a lot of new development because lots that are leftover or are redeveloping in Burnsville, they either already have a PUD on them or they're vacant and have complications that would need some sort of a deviation. So it can depend, but you may not necessarily see it if it is able to come through with a building permit and meet all city requirements.
Do you feel more comfortable if there was a, a provision in one of the ordinances that stated if, if, if a sign that is going to be made out of building materials based on expression or whatever, if it's over a certain limit, must be brought forth and be looked at? And we, we then have the ability to ask questions about it, what's going to happen?
Yes, I personally would feel more comfortable with that, but I, I don't know that I want to, again, create ordinance for that rare situation.
And depending on what's worded, we may not have any teeth in it whatsoever.
So let's stick with the, the rap guidance that we've given staff and kind of let them run with that? All right, Ms. Madden, you, I'm not going to ask if you're happy. Do you have enough?
I do think that I have enough and I will, like I mentioned, come back with an ordinance prepared for you to review.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, that is the last meat and potato item of the agenda. So are there any updates from planning commission members? Any updates from staff?
Just one update for you, that the next planning commission meeting, we just have one item on there now. It's for a, a, let's see, conditional use permit and interim use permit, basically for outdoor storage for one of our businesses in the, the industrial area. It's over, kind of close to the quarry, but really Lady Bird and DuPont area. So that's the only item that we have on at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only other update, and I hope you're aware of this, but we are having, immediately following this planning commission meeting, we are having a brief work session with our city council liaison. And I would propose we take a five-minute break in between this meeting and that work session. So with that, I would stand for a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Wadd?
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded by Commissioner Roberts. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you.